I'm going to call to order the Cohasset Planning Board Zoom virtual meeting Wednesday, November 17th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. I'm going to use reverse roll call order, starting with the chair. Amy Glassmeyer, I, Eric Potter, Paul Grady. Paul Grady.
He's here.
I'm here.
Thank you. Tom Callahan.
I'm here.
Clark Brewer.
Here.
Thank you. Lauren, would you like to provide the meeting protocol?
Certainly. So for members of the public wishing to speak to the board, we will have a designated public comment period for each of the public hearings that are on the agenda tonight. For items not on the agenda, there's a separate item to discuss under administration. And what we request is that you can either, we'll first put your name and address into the question and answer function. We don't use the chat in this. We only monitor through the Q and A that you see at the bottom of the screen. You can input written comments, or you can just ask to address the board and we'll promote you to a panelist at that time so that you can utilize microphone and camera. And again, we just need you at the time to state your name and address for the record. So, thank you.
All right. We will begin with reopening a public hearing on 808 Chief Justice Cushing Highway for a site plan review. The applicant is Tom Aland and Plumbing and Heating Company. And I will turn to the applicant and request any new information.
So, Madam Chair, I've just, we're just having them join us now. We have Greg Morse of Morse Engineering and Daniel Amalang on behalf of the applicant. If there's anyone else, oh, I see Todd Amalang here as well. He's actually the primary applicant.
All right.
For presentation, I just want to let the board know in terms of process. At our last continuation of this hearing, there had been an attorney on behalf of several of the residents in the neighborhood, they had discussed doing some, looking at some information in traffic for some possible suggestions. The applicant was amenable to working over that time period in between to have that discussion. And then I know there was a site visit, I didn't attend said site visit, but John Hallen, our building inspector, was there on site. And the applicant did make some changes to try to accommodate some of these requests. I know that there's additional requests that are out there from the neighborhood, though it's the opinion of myself, John Hallen, and our town council that we need to be just very careful in terms of conditioning this project, in terms of site plan jurisdiction that the planning board has specific to the site and not going off the site and, you know, going above and beyond what's required of this type of an application. So with that, I'm going to turn it to the applicant to present the new information that's changed since the last time this board heard. So, thank you.
Please go ahead, Mr. Amalang. You're muted.
This is actually Gregory Morse, registered engineer, on behalf of Todd Amalang. As was just stated, since the last time we were before you, we met with the Butters Group and their attorney regarding comments that they had on the project. As you likely are aware, you know, the project is a little over half an acre in size. It's in the highway business zoning district. We're proposing a two-story wood frame building that has tradesmen bays as well as some office space in it. The property being located at the corner of Brewster Road and Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Based on that meeting that we had at the site with the zoning enforcement officer in attendance, myself, and then the Butters Group, we did make a revision to the plan. We shifted the proposed driveway location on Brewster Road further up Brewster Road so that it lines up essentially with the driveway location with the Pilgrim Bank or Abington Bank on the opposite side of the street. Other than that, the drainage, as you're aware, has been fully reviewed by the Conservation Commission. Stormwater permit has been issued in that case. You had Amory Engineering do a peer review of the site. I believe you have their comments and you had a comprehensive traffic analysis by Vanas Associates commissioned by the applicant and then again peer reviewed by Amory Associates. I believe we have all of the outstanding items that the board has requested addressed. The issues raised by the Butters, we've tried to address to our ability on the site, being shifting of that driveway. There were additional requests which generally had to do with upgrades of the intersection of Brewster Road in Route 3A. Those we feel are outside the scope of this project. Those are within Mass DOT layout predominantly and are not, are not proposed by the applicant. We do not propose a project that changes the level of service at that traffic intersection and don't feel that that should be anything that prevents this board from moving forward. I'd turn it over to you.
Excuse me, Greg, can you show us the planned revisions? Can you do a screen share?
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
You can see the plan on the screen here.
Yes, it's, yeah, good. Thank you for enlarging it because it was blurry.
Yep. So where the, where the cursor here is, this is Brewster Road. At the bottom of the page is Chief Justice Cushing Highway, the proposed building being located here. This represents the two-way, which is in and out access off of Brewster Road. We had originally proposed that entrance down in this general location, the location of the existing curb cut, if you would, for the, the building at the site today. But what we've done is we've shifted that, as you can see, we've shifted that to the northeast, to this location, which lines up more closely with Abington Bank on the opposite side of the street. It pulls it further away from the intersection of CJC Highway, which allows a greater queuing of traffic leaving Brewster Road to accumulate before the entrance or exit to, to this site. That was the change that was made.
All right. Thank you for showing that to us. I'd now like to ask the, so if the applicant has no further information, thank you for providing the new information. I'd like to ask the planning board members, beginning with Mr. Grady, do you have any comments on the change that has been provided to us?
No, I don't dislike the change, but I have no questions. I have no comments to make right now.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Callahan?
My concern is that the state has, you know, is redesigning this road. It's a year or two or maybe three away from being done. Going to have a new turning lane in the middle of 3A. And I, my, my bottom line is what's the safest choice here? And, you know, the state, as far as I understand it, thinks that one of the problems with this stretch of 3A is how many curb cuts we have on 3A. And I still have a question about whether the curb cut on 3A in this plan is the safest alternative. With the dedicated turning lane, you know, directing the in and out of this site on Brewster, is that the safer alternative or is, or is this plan the safer alternative? And I don't know if the state has seen this, should it weigh in on this? You know, I don't think they have the power to terminate this curb cut, but you know, they, they've stated that it's a problem on 3A of having too many curb cuts. So, you know, I'd ask our own engineer and applicant's engineer and the Butters engineer, all three of them, I'd ask them, what's the safest alternative in light of what the state is going to change on 3A?
Well, if you remember, our peer reviewer indicated that the plan that was coming off of Chief Justice was the best plan. So we had had a formal engineering study done and that was the indication to us.
I just, you know, I would, I would just be interested to hear what the state highway departments, because they're the ones who are redoing the road and are making a statement that it's the number of curb cuts that's a big problem for the safety of this road. But, I mean, I appreciate that they've gotten together with the applicants, the Butters, to do a different location on Brewster Road. Kind of makes sense that it's right opposite than the one from the bank. It would be great to see if there's a right turn lane, but again, I agree, it's not, it's outside the jurisdiction of the site. And I don't know how we would even condition that because it's dependent on a decision by the state to allow it or not allow it. So if, you know, if the town can contact the state and say, hey, look, as part of your redesign, would you think about a right turn lane on Brewster Road? I'd be all in favor of us doing that, but that would be something separate from this permit. My, my other concern, you know, is that, well, this is fairly low, low intensity use, given what's, it's going to be used for, the tradesman. There'll be a lot of traffic at the beginning of the day, a lot of traffic at the end of the day. It's not going to be heavily used, but if this use in the building in the future were to change its use to a retail use, then you would have traffic all day long. And I, I just think I'd, when I add a condition that if that were to occur, that would be considered a major modification and we'd have to revisit the whole site at that time. But, you know, if, if, if the 3A curb cut is fine, then, then I'm okay with this.
Well, that's the, the technical advice that we have from the peer review that we requested. And while I recognize, so let's, let's have.
You know, my problem is I don't know that anybody's consulted with the state since they're far along in their design process. The changes to Route 3A in this area are going to happen. And I don't know that anybody, you know, we're looking at current conditions, but has anybody anticipated the conditions we're going to have a year or two from now when we have a different road with a middle turning lane?
All right. So let me turn to Mr. Brewer. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Yeah, I, you know, I would echo Tom's comment about the, about the entrance in the front. You know, it seems like if you had, if you eliminated that entrance curb cut, it would be a, a safer intersection in that it's so close to Brewster. I know it's not an exit, but, but it seems like from the, from the layout, you could get the, the same four cars to park parallel to 3A using the entrance that, that you've got configured. So that would be my suggestion and preference, that the parking lot be reconfigured so that you don't have an entrance at the front. I, I suppose if it was a retail use, it would, you know, the immediacy of getting to the retail user from 3A, the, there may be some, some slight visibility issues in terms of seeing the, the thing and getting to it. For an office type of use, which is what's proposed, I don't think that, I don't think it matters so much to have parallel spaces that are in front of the building as opposed to perpendicular. So I, I would say number one, if they can reconfigure the parking lot so that they eliminate that curb cut, I think it would be a, a safety benefit and I don't see that there would be a loss of parking.
All right. Lauren, can you weigh in on this?
So I would say that this was a recommendation when the plan originally came before the board, when we distributed for interdepartmental comment and the police chief, who's the head of public safety, had just requested this. I think his main concern was the egress on Route 3A. I will also say that in terms of the, the project, what we've, in similar site plan reviews that I've seen this board do, you've had a condition that they need to, the applicant needs to coordinate with Mast dot, you know, with future upgrades that are planned. So, I mean, I, I think we have heard from enough traffic safety engineers that this is a safe alternative for what's being proposed. I don't think it would be unreasonable for, for the board to condition that, you know, they may have to coordinate with Mast dot, because if they have it there, it would, to me, it looks like it wouldn't be that difficult to have it closed at some point if that were the safer option when the road was reconfigured, but I'm not a traffic engineer, so I really can't weigh in onto the technical aspect of that.
Right. I think there would be a requirement to, to engage Mast DOT for the curb reconfiguration that would be a, a part of what the applicant has to do. And, and Mast DOT could decide something else in conjunction with the project that they have planned or for any other reason as an independent evaluation. So I, I did reach out to the project manager at Mast DOT in District Five to see if we could see what is, what is the details that are planned, in particular in this area. I have not heard back. But given that we hired the same traffic engineering team who is doing the north Cohasset 3A design details, they may have that and may be able to give, give us a, a copy since 75% design was done as of the 10th of February. So whatever, I, I think that would be a useful thing for the town Cohasset, the planning board, maybe the selectmen to, to, to take a look at and discuss, not that we could necessarily make major changes to what Mast DOT is planning for their complete streets and sidewalks and curb cuts and all kinds of things that, that they worry about.
So are, are you making a recommendation, Mr. Brewer?
Well, I'm making a recommendation that the planning board see what's planned for this. I haven't seen it. I know it's in, been in the works and 75% was complete in February. So I don't see that this, this project dovetails with anything specific that, that Mast DOT is planning.
All right.
There really isn't anything that would be a, a condition of this, of this applicant other than asking them to, in the past, we've asked them to, to find out what's going on there and see if there's any, anything that they need to coordinate.
All right. So you're, you're indicating that this would not be a condition, but that this would be a request of the planning board that the applicant undertake a communication with DOT regarding this particular curb cut prior to the start of the project. Is that correct?
I think they'll, I think they'll have to coordinate with Mast DOT for their curb cut reconfiguration. But in addition, they, they want to anticipate what the changes might be with the redesign and I think independently and separate, and we're bringing it up as a part of this hearing. But I think the planning board should see what's planned down there.
So, go ahead, Lauren.
Sorry, I just wanted to address one of the comments that Clark made about the, the data that you'd like to see. We, I know that our engineering department has been coordinating closely with Mast dot on the, both the north and south plans. As you mentioned, one is at much further along in the queue and one is more in the earlier stages, but we do have that information. It has been circulated broadly in recent months, but I'm happy to get that information back to the board, you know, in this week so that you can have that fresh in the inbox.
I, I think that would be great and it might make sense to put it on our agenda to take a look at it and see if any planning board members have comments or in conjunction with the DPW director. And so I'll let that, I'll let that rest. I think we've covered that. And the other comment that I have, well, two more. One, I think, I appreciate the, that the applicant has met with the, with the, a neighbor group and shifted the entrance to the, the main entrance to their facility as a, a safety measure. I did note on the plan that Brewster Road is labeled "public way." And I did happen to check on the, the town's street listing. It's listed as a private way. Could the engineer for the project comment on his research into that and perhaps update the plan before it gets approved?
Mr. Morse, would you like to comment?
Yes, it is a mislabel on the plan. Brewster Road is absolutely a private way. It is not a public way. It's a mislabel on this plan.
All right. And I, I think last time I, we had a meeting on this, I asked if, if there was any information on the ownership of the private way. Is it owned by the homeowners association? Is it derelict fee where all the Butters would own to the center? Do you have any information on that, Greg?
As, as far as I know, there is no homeowners association that was created when the roadway was laid out. It was laid out on a subdivision plan, I believe, back in the 40s or 50s.
Yeah, like 51. I, I did take a look at the, the deed for this section, but it doesn't cover the, the connecting section behind it.
Yeah, June of 1950 is the subdivision plan. I have it in front of me. But no, there is, it's no owner, owner unknown for that roadway.
So in that case, where there's a derelict fee, then all the Butters would own to the center line, that would be the assumption unless there was some information that was provided differently?
That is correct.
Okay.
I, I do have some comments in regards to the Mast DOT discussion that just took place, if you'd like to me to address those, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
Sure. We reached out to the Mast DOT when we started designing this project because we do need a Mast DOT curb cut permit. There is not one in place right now, although there is a curb cut for this property. We discussed originally on this property having an in and out access, two-way access off of CJC Highway. Mast DOT was not in favor of that and neither were the emergency officials in Cohasset. It was requested that we make it at least, well, that we make it a one-way in and remove the exit onto 3A. That's how it evolved into one way into the site. I believe Chief Doc Ray wrote you correspondence. We did a fire analysis and I believe he was in favor of the fact that you could drive a fire truck into the site from two different access points around the building. Mast DOT will require that curb cut permit, but they don't take that until the local approving authority, which is you, has issued their approval for the project. They did say that there may be requirements to physically change the radius or the curbing types at that entrance onto the site, but they will be looking at all of those curb cut locations up and down 3A as their project evolves as well. Not just this site, but essentially every curb cut within this corridor as they move forward with their project.
Is that your question and concern, Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, I mean, my, my sense from reading under 12.4, the site plan review, it, you know, the, the main, the main issues I think have been resolved, that the vehicular and pedestrian access is safe and convenient and that in, in terms of the proposed development is harmonious and not harmful or injurious or objectionable to future uses of the area, given that it's, it's right on a state highway in an area of, of similar businesses that, that front on the, on the state highway. I don't see anything of issue with any of the other criteria under Section B of, I'm sorry, 12.6 under site plan review. I think that the applicant has covered those adequately.
All right. Thank you.
That, that is all the comment I have.
Thank you very much. Those are really helpful. Let me ask the planning board members once again, does anyone else, does anyone want to speak further to this or has Mr. Brewer summed up the situation and in response to the applicant, the applicant's engineer in such a manner that I can turn to the public for comment?
I just have one other thing to add that I brought up last time and I don't know if anybody has given it any more thought, but that's whether, because we have nonconformities under the curb cuts, I'm wondering if any relief from the zoning board needs to be obtained for this project.
So can you be more specific than that? What, when you're saying the non-
The curb cuts are nonconforming. They're not set back far enough from the intersection that's required under the bylaw.
We discussed that with zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Hallen. Because it was in the location of an existing curb cut on 3A, he did not feel that we had to go to the zoning board of appeals with that. The proposed curb cut on Brewster Road complies with the requirements for the setbacks.
Is that adequate for you, Mr. Callahan?
Oh, yeah, I guess.
All right.
You know what? I, I wish on these things, we would get things in writing from the people we are asking for the opinions, so, you know, just for future reference.
That's-
If the state says something, I'd like to see that in writing. If the building inspector says something, I'd like to see that in writing, but that's fine.
That, that, that's actually a really good recommendation. We run into this before. Ms. Lynn?
I just wanted to note that Eric Potter had joined us in, while we were in the process before we had called to order, so I don't believe that we went to him for comments, so just wanted to note his presence. And then I'll just speak to, just actually while I'm here, Tom's comment about things in writing. We will do the best of our ability to accommodate that, but I will just note it's not always possible because sometimes we can't anticipate what might come up at a meeting.
Yep, no, I, I get it. I, I understand that it is something I brought up before in this particular thing, but it's no big deal.
All right. But we'll work on that. That's a really good recommendation. Mr. Potter, welcome to the meeting. Can I ask if you have any comments on this project?
I don't have any comments. I think that was brought up by Clark is all the reason for his voice at the meetings and I think it's important to bring that up. I think the answer that was given was fishing for me. I was, at this point, I'm not hearing much neighborhood backlash, so there's less pause to move forward with the project like this. Think they've listened to us and take some things into consideration. That's all I got.
Okay. So you have no further comments. All right. Thank you then. With that, I will move now to the public comments and Ms. Lynn will promote individuals. Please remember that if the comment has already been made in previous meetings or if it's been made in this heat meeting, please do not repeat comments because we already have them in the, the record. Please go ahead, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you. We had one comment in the Q and A and from Frederick Winsman indicating that Attorney Seeny would like to represent the neighbors and speak to the board. So I promoted him and he's here to talk to you now. Thank you.
All right. Please keep your comments to five minutes unless that's, more is necessary.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to address the board. My name is Christopher Seeny. I'm an attorney on Cape Cod and I represent 44 households who live in the neighborhoods that are accessed through Brewster Road. And I appeared before the board at your last zoning board of appeals, sorry, planning board meeting and I encouraged a continuation so that we would have time to, to meet with the applicant, which meeting did take place on November 2nd. We appreciate the applicant's willingness to do that. With me tonight is our traffic consultant from Tep LLC, Kim Hazavarti. I, I'm not asking him to speak to the board tonight, but he is present at the meeting and if any board members or members of the public have any questions for Mr. Hazavarti, he's available. Today I sent two documents into the board. I'm sorry that that came on the day of the, this session of the public hearing. One was five reasons we might consider continuing this matter again because there are some things we feel have not yet been addressed. If the board is not interested in continuing it further and the applicant is not willing to, we also submitted a set of conditions that we would ask the board to consider before you make your decision on this site plan application. At the site visit on November 7th, we actually raised seven things. The shift in the entrance site, we should clarify, is something that came up because it would increase the distance for queuing cars and bring that entrance more into conformity with the zoning bylaws. But we said to the applicant that we're willing to see this commercial traffic come further into the residential neighborhood if you would work with us on trying to fix some of the problems that already exist in Brewster Road. And my clients have lots of conversations about whether we're willing to bring that entrance further into the, into the neighborhood. And the, the result was yes, we would be willing to do that, to see those cars come in deeper into the residentially used area, but we- But we, um, we would like to work with the applicant on helping us fix Brewster Road and looking at some of the fixes that would make it a better way for all of us as off-site road improvements that are often uh, incorporated into a special permit or site plan approval. We also asked that the plan show the edge of pavement and edge of right of way on the other side of Brewster Road, which it, it does not now show. Uh, the, uh, Mr. Morris did look in his files and didn't have that readily available, but if this plan had that data, at least we would have for us a better idea of the width of Brewster, Brewster Road as it exists today and that road right of way. Uh, so that one has not been done. We also know that in the future, even if your board doesn't order this applicant or, or impose a condition on this applicant, that we create a dedicated right turning lane on Brewster Road now, it may be something that we want to do in the future. And we have asked that this plan, which does show some room to allow an easement if needed, uh, that would be available if the planning board ever um, ever did decide to, to, to s- make sure that this roadway was widened. Um, I see that planning board member Callahan has his hand up. I don't know if-
Uh, keep, keep going, sir, please.
Okay.
Um, well, can I interject?
We would like-
I interject here?
Tom, I want to get this, the items that they have first, and then we can, uh, go back and talk about them.
In terms of drainage, this really falls into two categories. As you know, under the Stormwater Management Act, every project must be designed in such a way that no water will leave that site, and there is a stormwater management plan and, and set of calculations, and that has been reviewed. We asked that the town look at that carefully because it's making assumptions about how much water will will travel off of rather than infiltrate through permeable pavement. Um, but that's one issue. We know that this applicant must contain all of its water on site. The other aspect of drainage is a current situation, which we could visibly see at the sidewalk right on the edge of this property where water ponds and then freezes in the wintertime. And what we're really missing there is one catch basin, and we've asked the applicant to consider installing that catch basin so that that problem is remedied for all of us, and that has not been done. We talked about moving one telephone pole, not, not the pole that's on Route three A, but the pole near the existing entrance so that a future widening of the, of the road would be possible. And the applicant has not been willing to do that. We asked the applicant to work with us between November second and today on a plan where we might agree on how we could approach these off-site road improvements. And I called Mr. Morris on Monday to check in, but we had received no further contact after that, and we would very much like to sit down and, and roll up our sleeves and work on this plan. We also asked if the applicant would be willing to join a road maintenance agreement, and he is, and we appreciate that. He would like to see it, and it has been drafted. It's a complicated thing. There are twenty-three properties with road frontage on Brewster Road. There are many more properties that use Brewster Road, and I have drafted a four or five-page road maintenance agreement that would be a recorded declaration of conditions and covenants. But I have to get that reviewed by many, many neighbors, and that hasn't been completed yet, so even though we very much want to get a draft of this to the applicant, that has not happened yet. So for many reasons, we think this application might be better off if it does get continued again, and if we can sit down and go through these points that we would really like to discuss. If the board is not willing to do that, we have offered a set of conditions that, uh, do not impose a requirement to widen Brewster Road right now, but it would make that uh, a possibility in the future if it turned out that the traffic, the expected traffic impacts are worse than what the applicant's expert has, um, has predicted. Now, in terms of jurisdiction, it is often the case that a special permit granting authority or a site plan review authority will impose conditions that do not take place on a property. There have even been cases where an applicant has been required to install a traffic signal in an intersection, which is certainly not on the site. And, uh, you just heard recited section three hundred dash twelve point six B. Um, number six says the movement of vehicular and pedestrian, pedestrian traffic within the site and in relation to access streets will be safe and convenient. Um, also, your power in site plan review under section three hundred dash twelve six E includes the authority to, um, impose reasonable order of conditions, modifications, and restrictions as the planning board shall set forth, which constitute a suitable development and will not result in significant detriment to the neighborhood. We already have a poorly functioning intersection. It's at level of service E and F, E in the morning and F in the afternoon. This project introduces a hundred new cars on a weekday, fourteen new car trips in one hour in the morning and seventeen in the evening. The queuing line is doubling in length. And, um, the seconds, the delay in making a right turn out of Brewster Road is going to grow from fifty-nine seconds to a hundred and seventeen seconds. So this has a significant impact, and Brewster Road is suffering right now from poor drainage and a earnest look at widening it using some of the, the land on this site by way of an easement is a very valid concern, and we ask the board to, uh, to think about taking more time on this. If that's not possible, we understand it. Our conditions allow for looking later at the two main promises that were made in expert reports in this case. One was that no water will leave this site. That's the Stormwater Management Control Plan and Calculations. If that turns out not to be true, we think more drainage, uh, work should be done in the future, and, and the applicant should come back. And if the traffic projections, which I just reviewed, those very real impacts are even worse than projected, we think this site plan permit should state that if it turns out that this is a worse condition than protect, projected, the applicant should come back, and at that time, we can look together at possibly making that right turn lane and widening the street. So the neighbors are doing all we can to work with this applicant. We want to see him succeed. We do not oppose this project. But there are some very real considerations that we ask the board to, uh, to go through in this deliberative process before you, you take a vote on this site plan application.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Um, thank you for those comments. Let me make one comment with regard to the water that leaves the site. If the, the water leaves the site, uh, and there's already a, uh, condition associated with the Conservation Commission, then it would be taken up with the Conservation Commission because they have, they have already, um, approved this project. Uh, Tom Callahan?
You're mute.
I can't hear a thing.
Oh, you, you, you are, you can't hear us? Tom, uh, Tom, why don't you figure out what's going on, and I will move to Mr. Grady.
Um, I was interested in what that attorney had to say. Um, you know, I do like the idea of a right turn sign only, uh, but also you know, I, this, I may be the odd man in the bunch, but I'm all for putting off the hearing till they reach consensus or the closest thing to it. Um, I think that the neighbors, if they're attempting to work with, uh, the developer, I don't think continuing the hearing would be a problem, uh, as far as I'm concerned, and so they may come back up, have, you know, come back with, uh, you know, a, a greater understanding of what they're doing and working together. So that's just my opinion on that.
Uh, all right, thank you very much. Uh, are, are there comments, other comments from planning board members? I want to, um, Tom, Mr. Callahan?
Well, I, I hope you can hear me. I don't know.
We can.
You can, all right. I, I, I appreciate the neighbors' sentiments, but I, un- under what authority can we compel them to do a right turn on a state highway within their right of way? A, a catch basin within the state right of way, moving a telephone pole that is owned by a third party? Um, or that we could compel even an upgrade to the road at this point under site plan review? Um, I, I just, you know, I don't, I don't, I haven't seen these five conditions that the, uh, abutters are proposing yet. I'm curious to see them, but um, I just, you know, we, we, we can't deal with a wish list of things that we have no authority to give. Uh, the, the, the issue of Brewster Lane getting, you know, improved and widened someday in the future is going to be a much wider decision than, uh, this site plan, you know, within the authority of this site plan review, we can't order that. We can't, in, within site plan review, we can't order the state to do certain things to its highway. I, I just don't know where the applicant, the abutters think we're going to get this authority. Yeah, it'd be nice if they agreed to all this, but that, that, that's not something we can condition. And as far as a improvement, you know, uh, agreement, great if you get it, I, you know, everybody on Brewster Road and Ledgewood Drive, all those roads would have to agree to participate in it in order, and, and in order to be compelled to contribute to any future maintenance. Um, great if you can get that. There, you know, that's going to require an association and a wide, wide-ranging agreement, but it's not something we can condition or hold up a permit. Uh, I, I'm just, just curious as to where the abutters think we're getting this authority.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, you said it better than I could. Um, Ms. Lynn?
Thank you. I just wanted to give, um, a point of information and then a recommendation that the board might consider, um, information that we got from Carolyn Murray, who unfortunately is our, she's our, she's our council. She can be here tonight because she's sick, but information that she gave us was that we need to bear in mind that this is a use allowed by right in the zoning district and that we can't use site plan review process to unreasonably condition a site plan review approval so as to have the effect of denying the use allowed by right. The planning board can encourage the applicant to work with Mastop or other owners of the private way to devise a modified plan that's acceptable, but we can't condition this site plan review on receiving approval from other agencies or private parties. So I wanted to give that information as it's relevant to the point that Tom just made, and then second, um, I just think that when the board, in terms of the um, comment that we just received from Mr. Grady, I think what we would like to do is ask the applicant if they wish to respond and provide any further information, but at this point, if the applicant is done submitting information, I don't see that there's much point in continuing hearing if there's no new information that they plan to provide for their application this time anyway, so I think that we should ask if they have any response.
Thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Amalang, do you have a further comment you'd like to make? Or Mr. Morris for you?
No, I believe we've submitted everything that's been requested of us. Uh, you know, we'd like to move forward with this application if the abutters group someday does get together or road maintenance plan or anything like that. We're glad to look at it and participate at that point, but it's nothing that has been, uh, presented to us. Um, we've submitted every requested revision. We've complied with every peer review. We'd like to move forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Callahan?
Um, I, forgive me if I didn't see an email on this, but do we have these conditions that the abutters submitted, these proposed conditions?
Ms. Lynn?
I'll respond, and I'll also, um, let you know that we have a couple of comments in this section and, and attendee raising their hand again. Um, so just noting that we, uh, I think Mr. Seni indicated that he sent them over today. I did not have a chance to look at or distribute them if they are in my inbox. I can't guarantee that within a twenty-four hour window, I'm going to get information the same day of the meeting, so.
No. No, I appreciate that it was submitted. I just, I, I would like to see them before we, through our conditions. Um, I don't know if we're planning on voting on this and setting conditions tonight. Um, I drafted a couple myself before tonight's hearing, but, uh, I'd like to see what they have to say, but, uh, again, my, my comments about their wish lists still stand.
All right, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Potter?
Yes, I would just say, I think we've had enough time here. It's time to move on. Instead of being an obstructionist in nature, I think that we've had enough of an opportunity to hear out the residents here. Tom says he has some conditions in place. Um, it, it's like, as counsel said, um, at, at some point, you know, are we holding things up a little bit too long? And I think we give everybody adequate an opportunity to take, uh, to meet, to speak, to figure things out. We don't like what they figured out, we can condition it. If we like what they figured out, we can pass it, uh, or no further notice, but it's my opinion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Potter. Um, Ms. Lynn, um, we have, how many people, uh, that would like to?
So, um, Mr. Winsman just asked if Mr. Seni could respond to Mr. Callahan and the other questions, um, and then we had a a comment, just the requested right turn lane is on Brewster, not three A. I'll defer to the board, uh, the chair, whether she wishes to engage in a back and forth dialogue at this point.
Um, I feel that Mr. Callahan's comments about what our, uh, uh, ability to act upon the comments that were made is really limited. We cannot uh, respond to the, the items that were mentioned in large measure, so I'm not inclined to continue the conversation between, um, uh, the, uh, neighborhood's, uh, neighbor's lawyer and, uh, the planning board.
Well, may, may I, may I suggest we at least hear his response to what I said? I think that's fair. I, I, I don't know that it's going to change anybody's mind, but I think it's fair if we hear from them. Why not?
Um, all right, I will, uh, uh, agree to that. Uh, Mr. Potter, do you have your hand up still?
No, no hand up right now.
But, uh, please keep the comments short.
Uh, hello, um, am I?
You, yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Callahan, for inviting me to speak. I do want to clarify that all of the off-site road improvements I'm talking about are in Brewster Road, not Route three A. The telephone pole, we talked with the applicant about moving, is in Brewster Road, not three A. Uh, the drainage problem that needs to be fixed is in Brewster Road. Widening the road and making the right turn lane are, are also Brewster Road, and my clients are partners with the applicant who now owns eight oh eight, uh, CJ Cushing Highway in, in that roadway, and we, we can uh, work together on off-site road improvements, but your, your board certainly has jurisdiction under site plan review, and site plan review is something that applies to allowed uses. So just because something is allowed in the zone where it's allowed but subject to site plan review, your jurisdiction is triggered, and certainly your power to condition goes off the site. It's not just limited to what happens on the site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, um, our legal counsel, uh, provided the comments which Ms. Lynn um, read to the, to the board and to the audience, and that's the advice that we have.
I, I would, I would just add about Brewster Road. If I understand it correctly, it would be a right turn lane on Brewster Road to turn onto three A North. Well, that's going to intersect with a state highway, so the state probably is involved. Number two, it might, depending on how it was widened, it might require going over the land of the owner of the site where the bank is, whether that's the bank itself or, or whoever owns the whole plaza. I, I don't see how we have the power to compel that, work on other land and work that will, I mean, I suppose we could say, yeah, put in the turn lane, but you're going to have to get the state's approval. So then what if the state says, no, they don't want a right turn lane coming into a highway at that point? I, I just, I, I, I appreciate your opinion, Attorney Seni, but my opinion is that we don't have that much authority off-site with site plan review. The, the, the reference to B six is made.
Um, we can't hear you right now.
Right, the reference to B six is it's safe and, and, uh, convenient relative to the streets in leaving this site, not in other impacts on the, uh, uh, others, the, the abutting streets. Uh, so I think we're limited to, you know, it says site plan review for a reason. I think we're limited, pretty much limited to the site. Uh, I appreciate the concerns, and this, you know, this project isn't going to solve all, solve the problems of this intersection. It might make them worse. It would make it far worse if it was a retail use. I think this is a fairly minimal impact, all things considered, but- It would make it far worse if it was a retail use. I think this is a fairly minimal impact, all things considered, but I just don't see the authority that we can go further, further afield here. So that's, I won't repeat myself anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Thank you, Mr. Senni, on behalf of the neighborhood. Can I get a perspective from the board members?
Well, I would like to see their condition, their suggested conditions before we issue, you know, make a vote on issuing this permit with our own conditions. I think we owe that to the abutters to at least see them, so.
Okay. So are you recommending that we continue this hearing until such time as the planning board can receive the information and review it and then come back with conditions?
Well, I, I would, if Attorney Senni submitted it today, I'll take his word for that and consider them submitted today. And we can close the hearing to close off all evidence, but that we do our deliberations on the conditions at our next meeting.
All right, Ms. Lynn. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
I was just, I was just going to make that point that I, it appears I do have an email from Mr. Senni in my inbox. So I have the information. It has been submitted for the record to date. But if you wanted to close the hearing at least, and at that point, you're not accepting any new information, that would be something. And then you could entertain deliberation at a subsequent hearing. Well, we can also have our counsel present.
All right. Thank you. Lauren, do we have a date and time that we could continue this?
Yes, I would suggest that we can continue this. Well, actually, let me ask a question. Are you continuing the hearing?
Well, first of all, there's, there is one more comment from Mr. Winsman that I think we should address. But after doing that, my suggestion is we would close the hearing, no more evidence, but we set up our next available time to deliberate and issue, issue what conditions we wish to issue.
All right. So you, I can't see if there's another person that wishes to speak. Is that what you're indicating, Tom?
Yeah, there is a, Mr. Winsman has another comment that I think we should address, but and then I see Paul has.
All right. Ms. Lynn, can you allow the member of the public speak, please?
It's a, it's a written comment. Does the issue of safety allow the board the authority to modify a site plan? Safety is at issue here.
My answer would be, yes, that's why we would issue conditions, but I think, I think the abutters and myself have a different opinion of how drastic the safety issue is here, given the proposed use.
All right.
That would be my answer to that. Anybody else in the board has a thought about that? Please, where you at?
Okay. Thank you for that. Somebody mentioned that Mr. Grady wishes to speak?
Yeah, I would just follow up with Tom that I would make a motion to continue until we hear what the abutters and what the conditions that the attorney has put up. That's where I'm leaning on this conversation.
So are you making a motion?
Yes.
Are you making a motion to close the hearing? No further information to be collected?
To continue until the next available date, until we receive the information, the abutters have a chance to see it, what the attorney Senni, I believe his name is, has to propose that Lauren has right now.
That's true, but that information is with us now, so we could close the hearing. That information would circulate with us and then we could condition the, the site plan approval at our next meeting available.
I don't think any, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
But if I could just figure out, I think I'd go along with Paul on this one, just to continue it. There's no reason why we can't continue, but also then close out and vote the same meeting. But this would at least allow for communication to continue. And if nothing, you know, changed, we could still, we could just still close it out and vote. So I, I think I'd go along with Paul on how to deal.
All right. So you're saying not to close the, the hearing, but to continue it at a later date and to review the information that has been provided to us today. And then at the next meeting, we will continue the discussion and potentially close the hearing and develop conditions. Mr. Grady?
And that should wrap it up. Well, it gives the chance for the abutters to meet again with the developers and hopefully, you know, they have a chance to air out and they may come up with something even better, but you know, without that information, I think everybody should have a fair shot. That's what we're here for.
All right. Can I get a motion, please?
I made a motion. Someone want to second it?
All right. We just, we just need the date and time. So a couple of things. Greg has his hand up before we make the motion. So does Tom.
Sorry. All right. That just happened. Yes, Mr. Amalang?
Thank you. I just point a clarification. This was submitted on May 6th. I'm wondering what the timeline for action is with this.
That, you mean in terms of what we're required to, the time that we are required to act?
Yes.
Ms. Lind?
I need to confirm the details of that, but it's my understanding that the timeline is going to kick in when you close and then you have a timeline for decision. I don't have specifics in front of me though, and I need to confirm it with counsel.
The applicant would be hopeful, if you could, to close the public hearing and have your deliberations. You have everything that you need in your possession at this point. You have the suggested conditions by the abutter. You also have an email from me in regards to those conditions that were submitted. You can debate those and deliberate on those at, at your next hearing, but there's no more need for public comment on this. You have everything that's been requested of the applicant. There's nothing further for us to provide to you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. We have a motion on the floor and a second. I'm going to do a roll call. Eric Potter?
Hi. We, we need a date and time.
Right.
December 1st at 6:30.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Potter?
Hi.
Mr. Grady?
Hi.
Your Callahan?
Hi.
Brewer?
Hi.
Me, Glassmire, I. Thank you very much. We will see you December 1st at 6:30.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We are at 7:30. We were originally expected to be at 7:00 PM. The first, we have three basically business items. We have no further material before the planning board. The first item is to go over and vote to accept the proposed 2022 planning board meeting schedule. Ms. Lynn will speak to that. The next will be a discussion of the committee liaison reports. And then we will take up any items that are not anticipated 48 hours in advance. So Ms. Lynn, please take it away.
Thank you. So I'm going to pull up the schedule so that you can take a look at the revised version that I put together. I did try to map out, as I've done in the past year, map out our calendar ahead for the entire year of 2022. We typically meet twice a month and we take actually one off in August. So it's a total of 23 meetings. That's what we've done. With the exception of adding special meetings for joint meetings or to address, you know, special topics. So I'm going to share with you, let me just make sure I have the right one. And then I'm just going to ask for you to approve this so that I can begin. I really, I need this schedule laid out so that I can begin to plug in at least our January hearing dates because we have things coming up on the horizon that I need to assign. So I'm just having trouble with my computer here. Hold on. All right.
I thought we meant one thing. Unless it was.
We typically meet twice a month.
We should meet three times. We should, it should be three times.
I cannot.
I don't know. I need things to do.
You're knitting is a great hobby.
Thing for you, my screens crop because you wouldn't see my fingers doing.
All right. I'm going to share. I'm able to pull it up now. So I'm sorry for the delay, everyone, but let me get that shared now. So this is the calendar for 2022 that I'm proposing. I did my best to avoid holidays fall oddly this year, I will say, but I spent a lot of time around a calendar and spacing out time to make sure that it was not too long in between meetings. And this is my proposal to try to avoid all of those holiday weeks that we see that people typically like to, you know, not have meetings on school holidays and things like that.
And only three meetings in July and August. I think this is an excellent, excellent schedule. I'll make a motion to accept it unless there's discussion.
I'll second it.
Can we just have a minute to look at it, please?
Well, I've seen it. It was emailed to us today, so I've seen it, but if others need to look at it, then go ahead.
Well, I want to make sure that there haven't been changes made since today.
And I will say, we can have meetings that are subject to change in the calendar as necessary, but for the most part, I just like to set this out so we have some thought process around, you know, a regular schedule. And also while you're all looking at this, I'll note for anyone in a public looking, it's really important to note that we're increasing our filing deadlines by one week. The reason for this is to accommodate a switch in publication of public hearing notices and legal requirements in the Closet Mariner instead of the Patriot Ledger. And the reasoning is that the, you have to, there's very tight timelines and parameters and I won't get into the, I'll spare you all the details, but we have to have a certain date that we have to publish and because Patriot Ledger publishes daily, we were able to accommodate that on a tighter schedule, whereas now Closet Mariner is only on Fridays. So we have to add an extra week into our calendar to meet those publication timelines according to the Mariner schedule.
All right. Would somebody like a motion to accept this calendar?
I already made a motion. And I seconded it.
Okay, roll call, vote. Eric Potter?
Hi.
Paul Grady?
Hi.
Tom Callahan?
Hi.
Clark Brewer?
Hi.
Me, Glassmire, I. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Now, the next item that we have is to talk about the, our boards and because of various circumstances, I'm going to ask Lauren to speak about several of them because due to the storm of fewer upset and, and due to other things, people were not able to attend. And so Lauren is going to speak regarding MPIC, affordable housing, the harbor and Elm Street.
Thank you. I'm just writing them down. So I go on the order you suggested. Okay. So master plan implementation committee. The master plan has been meeting regularly to work on currently the focus with the overarching group would be, we're looking at sidewalks and trying to identify opportunities to fund sidewalks other than the complete streets program because we've been notified by the state that they're now capping the complete streets funding per community at $400,000 every four years. So with that sort of tightening up, we're trying to identify other, other opportunities. So I've been meeting with Katie Dugan and our finance director and sort of looking at other communities and case studies to try to find out some other options that could help us fund some of the sidewalk initiatives that we have. In addition, falling under master plan, of course, are all of the working groups. We have Elm Street corridor. We had had a third and final public forum for phase one that was originally scheduled for the end of October, but that was when we had the Norrester and suffered power outages, so we had to postpone. We're now scheduled to have that meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM via Zoom and we'll be having the forum where, in which the working group and our consultants will sort of present their deliverable of phase one, which was a conceptual layout based on public input and a recommended layout for Elm Street. The idea here is that this is a presentation of the concept that's been recommended by the working group. And now in subsequent phases, we will work out sort of the detail into design and construction level to get to ultimately a constructible project. So that's where we stand now. I will note that we had applied for community for growth, one stop funding for the whole portion of what we were calling phase two, to get it to shovel ready completeness, but we were not awarded that grant from the state. I have a, I'll be actually hearing feedback after Thanksgiving as to why we didn't have, you know, competitive application. So hopefully it'll help us in subsequent rounds. But for now, I've spoken with the town finance director and the town manager as to how we could maintain momentum on this project because it has been identified as a goal from so many of the groups, our plans and by the select board this year. So we have now figured out a way to phase it into phase two and three so that we go to design level and then to construction level so that we can while working on phase two, continue to try to seek funding and other grant opportunities for phase three. So that project is in motion. And, and I hope you guys, if you're available, can attend the forum because we really want to hear public input and, you know, more public input to be happening in phase two and three. Also under master plan implementation is we're looking, I've been in communication with Corey Evans and Katie Dugan about sort of talking about the next piece, looking at the village and revitalization and what that might mean. That's something that'll be coming in the coming months that we're sort of putting some attention on. And in addition, I've been working with zoning by law working group, which I won't steal too much of Tom's lender. But we're working to, as you all know, based on our joint meeting to ramp up for an RFQ for a zoning re-rate process. So I was working earlier today with some of the members of master plan implementation committee and our procurement director trying to go over the, the details of how an RFP process or an RFQ process, I should say, will work. And we'll be having more of an update for the planning board on that actually at our next meeting. And then I'm trying to think, I'm sure there's something else under master plan that I'm just forgetting right now. Ah, climate and resiliency, which will also dovetail into the harbor piece. And I, I know Tom has more to add on this, but I'll just let you know that there's been a lot of buzz and interest in climate and resiliency that's been growing and we've been hearing, we also know that it had been identified in the master plan and also kind of flagged as one of our upcoming to midterm goals, knowing that we of course have only so much bandwidth to go around, but it had been flagged. We're now trying to plan a process in which we are looking at this as sort of a three-prong approach and I'm working closely with Breonna Bennett, who is the town's part-time energy and environmental assistant. She provides support to alternative energy committee as well as harbor committee and works very closely with myself and the procurement director. And we are, her and I are shaping a project right now. We're in data collection phase. There's a survey, which Tom will get into a bit later about what, sort of trying to get a baseline about what climate and residency initiatives are either underway, have already been completed or are planned from each of the different boards, committees and groups in town. And then what we plan to do is sort of have some educational information that can go out to the public to sort of baseline and highlight what's being done and what's being planned. And then we would like to, as we move into the new year, we're going to plan a series of roundtable stakeholder discussions. They're going to be topic themed and then ultimately culminating in sort of a surrounding Earth Day, a climate summit that we plan to host. So we're in the planning phase right now, more to come and we'll have more updates. And like I said, it's, it's been very busy this year, particularly as we lead in the town meeting with the holidays coming up. So we're really going to ramp up those efforts a lot once we see the new year come. And with that, I'll segue next into the harbor. Harbor group is actually also very focused on climate and resiliency that is specific to like coastal harbor related topics. So one of the groups of harbor committee is actually looking at sort of in concert with a larger resiliency picture, also doing some harbor focused topics that will be coming up in the new year as well. Harbor also is working on a series of infrastructure and sort of policy items. Some of the things that we're working with in terms of legal counsel are potential to establish a shellfish bylaw, looking at how you might look and work with intergovernmental, you know, agreements with Situit to help fix the breakwater at Bassington Beach. So these are the type of topics that are going on down at the harbor, among many others. And then I will next wrap it up with the affordable housing groups. We have the affordable housing steering committee as well as we have an active trust. They both meet regularly. The trust is really the fiduciary branch and the steering committee is more of a policy sort of board. And we are anticipating, I have an update that's been circulated and I'll send it around again, if you don't already have it, that I had put out a couple of months ago that sort of details where we are in terms of our subsidized housing inventory and where the census is at. We do know that the census data is very backed up from where they had planned the 2020 decennial census to be released. We're now anticipating the numbers that we need to update. The SHI will not be released until later in 2022. So at this time, we will continue to calculate our subsidized housing inventory using the 2010 decennial census data. So that's for a lot of communities, sometimes a breath of fresh air because we, you know, have a little bit more leeway to get some more units in the count before we see our percentages updated. But with that said, I'll also note that we at this time, over a series of a couple of projects, have approximately 43 SHI eligible units in the pipeline that are in some level of either permitting approval or pending permit approval. So with that, I'll pause because I think I've covered most of the groups that I work with outside of planning board.
Lauren, for the public meeting tomorrow on Elm Street, where, where can the board members find the link for that meeting or did it get emailed to everybody or?
So it is actually posted on the town website and it's under the master plan implementation committee. And I would be happy also to send out, I'll send a reminder as well so that you all have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You do know you're competing with the Patriots game tomorrow night. You do know you're competing with the Patriots game tomorrow night.
Are we? I did not even realize that one.
Oops.
Oops.
There really weren't very many options for days.
Just make sure that it's over by 8:20.
Yeah. Oh, that's terrible. Well, maybe it'll rain. Maybe it'll storm. Okay, Lauren, do you want to say anything about the library grant?
Oh, yes. Thank you. The other, I was just updated by Chris Senior that the library director received a grant for, I'm probably going to explain it incorrectly, but it's a storyboard that is sort of an interactive. You can put different stories and create a trail. They were originally looking to do it at the library or trying to think of different ways to integrate this into the community so that it could draw people out and really be something to see. So they've, they're currently in the plans of planning what would be a holiday storybook in the common wrapping around the village area to try to bring people down. So I think that this, you know, while we're still very much working this out, it's going to happen very soon because the holidays are almost upon us. So I think it could be a good opportunity to bring people into the village and sort of dovetail with some economic development goals, you know, particularly around the holidays for the businesses down in the village. So that's, I think, exciting and it's always nice to hear fun things happening in town.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Open space? Would anyone like to speak to open space?
Yeah, that's me.
Wait a minute. Can everybody close down their speaker except for Eric's?
I don't know.
Okay, now Eric, you can talk.
Yeah, so open space went well. We just had a meeting recently. It's really an update meeting, maybe try to identify some new parcels that would work out well for potential open space requirements down the road. It's been great work with Paul. Moving in the right direction with that. Hopefully we'll get some new spaces that we can identify with, I think a lot of help by Katie Dugan with some of the maps and work she's done with the zoning working bylaw committee.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grady.
Yes.
About CPC?
CPC?
The CPC?
Very exciting times. We actually put a wheelchair past a wheelchair. Handicap accessible to go to the beach. So that was pretty good.
Is that the, is that all that you guys talked about?
Well, that's the one that springs to mind, Amy, because that was the most exciting.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think they have that many recommendations for this town meeting other than that one. There might be one other thing, but I.
It wasn't, there wasn't anything really big, nothing major. That was a good one, though.
Yeah, that, that is a good one.
Okay. All right, then Clark, I had Lauren summarize a lot of the things that you're a part of. Mainly because of the ways in which the schedules got, got constrained. Is there anything you'd like to say?
No, I don't have anything to add to the Elm Street Corridor Working Group.
Okay, thank you. In terms of Economic Development Committee, the bottom line is a lot of the things that need to be done or would, could be done as it relates to economic development really needs a staff assistance. It real, it's, it's not something that you can do on a, on a volunteer basis. There are efforts that are underway and, and trying to focus on the village. But there is also a, a certain amount of bandwidth limitation. And so for right now, there's not a whole lot going on. I, I, that's just my sense of things. Lauren, do you have anything further to say?
No, I, I don't have anything further. I just, I know that we are continuing to have discussions in terms of town hall staffing as to how we could add capacity, but you know, it's just something that needs to be planned out and built into budget cycles. So we're communications are ongoing, but hopefully we will continue to add that capacity to meet the many needs and demands of Cohasset's goals.
Yeah, one of the issues came up about whether or not we want to bring on board somebody who could be a grant writer. Because it's clear that the day-to-day work of everyone in town is simply maxed out. And it was commented by, I think, Jack Creighton, that a person like that would actually excuse me, pay for themselves. And in fact, that's actually how a lot of the development took place in town before we actually got a planner back. So but, but you know, it's slow going without having any resources. Okay.
Has anybody explored subbing that out on an as-needed basis? Send out RFQs, get somebody who'll respond and who'll be available on an as-needed basis. I don't think we need to.
I mean, it's not a bad idea. We just don't, we don't have money in alignment with something like that.
That's a good suggestion though, and I'll, I'll carry that back in our upcoming discussions about.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't necessarily have to have an employee. We could, you know, but you still have to pay.
Where you need someone to write them and then there's a lot of times where there's really nothing.
Right, right. But you still need to pay them as they do work, of course. So you do have to find the money, but.
Okay, with regard to climate change, do you want to say anything, Mr. Callahan?
I do. Well, first I'll just quickly in the zoning working group, the proposed text for the legalized, Lauren was nice enough to set up a meeting last week with Brian Joyce from DPW. So we incorporated some, put from him, technical specifications and the like. So it has been circulated to all of you, I believe, and we're scheduled for a hearing on the 15th of this.
You know, Tom, you've, you've cut out at the most critical times.
The other night I sat in as an observer to the master, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Unfortunately, what you said, you were coming in and out, so you'd have to start over again.
Oh, all right. Well, anyway, the, the residential, the proposed residential access regulation has been finalized by the working group and with import, input from Brian Joyce and you all have it. And it's on the 15th. If anybody has any comments beforehand they'd like to bring to my attention, feel free, but you know, we are having the public hearing on the 15th. I, I sat in on the Master Plan Committee last Monday and it was the first time I heard that there was a survey being circulated about climate resiliency amongst all the departments and committees. So I thought that the planning board should put its two cents into the extent that some aspects of the zoning bylaw touch upon the, the issue. I put together a response to that survey. I circulated it the other day. I did not submit it despite yesterday's deadline. It's, it's an internal thing, so it's not a problem with a deadline, but if there was no objection to it or any suggested changes to it, I'd like to submit that on behalf of the board.
I'd like to make a recommendation. Well, let me say, I'll say it as an offer, which is that in conjunction with Concom and with the harbor plan, the, Tom Bell has developed a model of a storm surge and sea level rise that shows you what would happen under a set of circumstances from sandy scale storm to lesser types of storms which could actually hit town. And if somebody would like it, he could do a narrative of the maps that he's made. So it gives you a visual of what the consequences would possibly be. This is building off of the work that Lauren was working with, working on with the folks at Province Town who did an analysis for Situit and Cohasset. So if you'd like to be informed, since we can't, since you, we can't all go and watch a show that one person provides. I don't think we can because that would be considered a meeting. I could ask Tom if he would just narrate the analysis that he's already done and then everybody could look at it at their leisure.
I'd like to hear.
Any comments besides Tom Callahan?
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, I got two for. I'm going to take that as a yes, so I'll see if I can get that set up so you can see, because it really will help you think this through in a way that you can't think if you can't see it. Okay, I think that that.
Well, can I get it? Is, is everybody okay with me submitting the survey response that I drafted on behalf of the board?
Did everybody read the response that you sent to the board?
Yeah, I, I circulated it Tuesday morning.
That, that may not be enough time for everyone.
Well, the deadline was six o'clock last night to, to submit it because I only first learned of it Monday night. I don't know. It's not rocket science. Whatever.
Oh, wait a minute. Lauren, can, can we have a little bit more time to make sure everybody's read it? Or will people feel okay and agree that what Tom sent in is fine?
You, if you need some more time, I can let Brianna know that you'll be getting.
Yeah, we're not the central board department to this at all, but I just think that our, our input as it affects the, you know, climate resiliency and the zoning bylaw intersect just should just be made known.
Yes. Yeah. So if you, if you want some more time, that's not a problem. I can just indicate, you know, before she does anything with that information. She's got a lot of sorting to do anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm just shocked nobody's reading my emails as soon as they get them.
Okay. Mr. Grady?
No, I was telling Tom I didn't get his email. Otherwise I'd be thrilled.
I, I don't know if everybody uses the Cohasset MA email.
I still can't get on it.
So Lauren's nice enough to send it to my Yahoo account. So that's something screwy in this town.
All right, all right.
Okay, I'll recirculate it.
Okay, so Eric just came back in. Eric, what we were talking about was some comments that Tom made in response to a request by the boards of town regarding views on climate resilience. And we were deciding whether we would just approve what Tom submitted in case people hadn't read it. Did you get a chance to read it?
I, I did not get a chance to read it, no. I don't think I saw an email from Tom about that though, to be quite honest with you.
I'm trying to use everybody's town account because that's what I was told you were supposed to be doing, but I, I, you know, if you don't get it, you don't get it, but I'll have Lauren recirculate.
I'll recirculate tomorrow.
Okay, so then.
Then Tom, I, I apologize.
No, no worries. No, no worries at all, but I, I, it's not, again, this is not an earth-shattering issue at the moment either, but I would just say, if there's no, if there's any changes to it, Lauren, make the changes and submit it. If there's no changes, just submit it. We don't need to really have a vote on it. I just wanted to get everybody's sense that they were okay with it. That's all.
Well, I just, I just pulled it up and I think Tom's adequately answered the, the basic question. So I, I mean, I'm not gonna, I wouldn't recommend holding it up if it's going to mess up something. So that everyone has a week or a month to to review it and comment.
Okay.
We gotta have faith in our fellow board members. I recommend passing it right through.
All right.
I'll remember that when the bylaw rewrite comes through.
Okay, I, I'm going to take that as a consensus vote. And then the, then the, the last item would be, are there, is there any items not anticipated 48 hours in advance? Or the minutes that we can approve?
I don't have any minutes for you tonight and I don't have any items that were unanticipated.
All right. No one else either?
Nope.
All right.
Getting down to the ZR.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Potter.
Hi.
Mr. Grady.
Hi.
Mr. Callahan.
Hi.
Mr. Brewer.
Hi.
Amy Glassmire. I. Thank you all very much.
Good night, everybody.
See you in two weeks. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you all.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Take care.
Bye. Thanks for all.